My name is Mike Shaw and I'm the emcee or moderator or whatever for the program this evening. I'd like to welcome all of you here this evening for this PTA-sponsored candidates forum. If I'm too loud or too quiet, let me know. It's certainly nice that we have seven of the eight candidates present tonight so each of you can hear their views and learn something about them before the voting comes up in a few weeks. And I will make a couple of announcements. First of all, part of our program is going to be that if the audience has questions, we're going to have index cards available that you can write your question down and there'll be people that come by to collect the index cards and then we'll have them up here and towards the end of the program after we discuss some prepared questions, then we'll have time for individual questions that way. I would probably ask you to make your question for the group rather than an individual, although certainly some individuals feel more strongly about some issues than others, I'm sure. I do want to introduce a special guest tonight, a person who's been very involved in not just the politics but the success of the PTA program, not just in Frederick County but also the state of Maryland, and that's Debbie Austin who just came in. We have, like I said, seven candidates and what we're going to do, we're going to give each one of them up to two minutes just to briefly tell a little bit about themselves, what they represent. We do have a timer down in front and 15 seconds before that two minutes is up, the timer will raise the index card and I would ask you at that point to kind of finish up your thought. I'll also remind you that there's nothing wrong with brevity and if you don't have a long answer, that may get you a couple votes along the line as well. Let's start, we'll just go down the line, I'll kind of mix it up as we go along, but let's start with Mr. Jay Mason, you have your two minutes, Jay.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Thank you for moderating tonight. Thank you, PTA, for hosting us this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. And I'd like to say that years ago when I entered middle school in August, the middle of sixth grade, my parents had to advocate for me. I was put in all enriched classes, which is the middle of the road classes there, and my family was not acceptable of that. They didn't like it. So they went to the school and they said, "He needs to be in all advanced classes." We're not happy with him being enriched. So they advocated for me against my better wishes. I was put in all advanced classes. It helped me, it made me a better person. You get a much better education if you're put in the higher middle classes. Several years ago, my daughter, going into seventh grade, a letter came home from school and they asked me and my wife if they wanted her, if we wanted her into the accelerated classroom in seventh grade. And obviously we said yes. The school told us no. So we, I almost sent an email, an angry email, but my wife stopped it. And we sent a simple email and they again told us no. They did their evaluation and said that my daughter was properly placed in honors level, which is still good. We were okay with that, but wanted her in accelerated. So anyway, they told us no twice, so I said to my wife, "Let's figure out how she does in honors in seventh grade, in honors math." So after her first semester, she got a 94 in honors math. And so I contacted the AP and I said, "How do we get my daughter into accelerated?" Math special again, said, "We feel she's properly placed honors." And I said, "That's not acceptable. She needs to be in accelerated." So my parents, my brother, they taught me to advocate. I'm a parent, I advocate, I have three children. I'm going to teach my children to advocate and I think being a parent, an engaged parent, is essential to their child's education. And that's what I want every parent in the Frederick County school system to be and do. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett is next.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. And I also wanted to thank the PTA Council of Frederick County for sponsoring us. It's, we don't have a lot of opportunities as Board of Education candidates to have forums like this. And so I also wanted to thank everybody who's taken time on Tuesday evening to come and listen. And I also wanted to thank my fellow candidates. I think this has been just, we've had good opportunities and I'm running with people who are qualified and intelligent and committed. And I think conversations like this allow you to see some of the nuanced differences between candidates, but I can say that everybody sitting up here is committed to public education. And I think that's an important thing to say. I'm running for reelection to the Frederick County Board of Education because I believe in public education. I grew up on Main Street in Myersville. I eventually got out of the Old Town High School and along the way I had teachers who really affected the trajectory of my life and made me committed to citizenship, to leadership, to push me out of my comfort zones and probably are a lot of the reason why I'm sitting here today, running for office once again in Frederick County. I fought long and hard about running again for Board of Education. It's a tiring, long, hard job, but I'm so committed to our public schools and to everybody who works in them, our families in Frederick County. When I joined the Board in 2014, we were just still in the midst of a tremendous, tremendous financial crisis. We had been squeezed hard with maintenance and effort budgets. And I am so thankful to have joined the Board with new leadership in county government, the commitment of our county executive, our county council to fund our public schools the way they should be funded. I committed very early on to improving salaries for our teachers and many other things and I'm almost out of time, surprisingly. But again, now that the money situation is better, we have to focus on continuous improvement and that's looking at places where doing things well and things we need to do better. And I'm looking forward to elaborate on some of those answers. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett, thank you. The next candidate is April Owen.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and taking time to come and share your thoughts on education through your questions and to listen to ours and to listen to what our passions and priorities are with education. This has been quite the journey. I moved to Frederick County when I was in fourth grade. And quite, Jay and I actually may look a little different, but we have quite a similar story. In, when I was in middle school as well, I was also placed where I felt it a little bit easy and I had to advocate for myself and I had to fight for myself. And one of those reasons is because I was put, a label was put on me and one of those reasons is I talked too much. But that doesn't stop me. That label didn't define me and I kept fighting and I found what I was passionate about, which at that time was science. And that led me to high school and fighting to take the courses I wanted to take in high school and through college and to find that path. And that's what I want each and every kid, each and every student in our school to be able to find their passion, find what they love, find what they love to do. And that's why I'm here, because that comes in all different pathways and whether it's high academic or whether it's career, it's a multitude of offerings that we have in Frederick County. And I'm very proud to be a part of that and be increasing those offerings every single year. I have three children and my oldest is now a sophomore in college. When I started on the Board of Education, she was in sixth grade. When I started running for the Board of Education, she was in fifth grade when we had something called Turk Math. And Turk Math might not mean something to you, but it was common for even worse math. Reason why I fought for that is because the community didn't like that math program and the art board bed at that point was not listening to the community, I felt. So I wanted to make a difference and I wanted to have an impact on Board of Education. And so I, oh man, geez, I'm really sorry. Anyway, I looked for a time anymore, I'm almost out of time. My biggest, biggest success for being on the Board of Education is bringing that community, that community perspective and being the voice of students and families on the Board of Education. And that's one of the things I'm most proud of.
Thank you. The next candidate is Camden Raynor.
Thank you very much. And I want to, again, first and foremost, thank the PTA Council for putting this together tonight as well as Frederick High School for hosting us. I had the opportunity to see this new beautiful building and it is stunning, especially, I went to middle, this is amazing in every way. It's wonderful to see as a flagship school in our county. First in background, I look a little different. I'm the youngest candidate up here, but I have, again, I have a little school story as well, except the second. But I was former graduate of Frederick County. I'm an honorary, fourth-generation middle-time graduate. I was raised in Myersville. I'm a 2016 graduate of Old Time High School. I'm currently at the University of Maryland. We can talk about that later. But in middle school, I grew up, they talk about the funding crisis, and I grew up in a time, I was in the school system during this really tough recession. That was a foreign event, I'm not trying to help, but I remember back in 2010, writing emails to a Dr. Miller, begging him not to cut our door school in sixth grade. "I have a long history of civic engagement in this county. We need people of all ages and races and races who step up and run for office." I was not interested in waiting my turn to be up here. "We need people to step up and say, 'I want a voice and importantly, I want to vote and have public education centered in Frederick County.'" "I am committed to this county. I've lived here my entire life. I hope to stay here." "And I'm looking forward to having a meaningful conversation with the future of public education in Frederick County." Thank you.
The next is Mr. Brad Young. Ms. Owen?
Yeah. First off, I also want to thank the PTA for hosting this event. Ms. Barrett said we currently had a few of these events, so it's good to be able to get out and be able to talk about the issues. I also want to thank the thanks to all the folks that are sitting up here on the stage. Everyone here is committed and in their hearts supports public education. I want to thank my fellow candidates for, this microphone is not working. I have a lot in my background compared to Camden. I was born to two elementary school teachers. My mom was a second grade teacher. My dad was a fifth grade teacher. And so I was taught early in my life the importance of education and how important it was to be the great equalizer in our society. Education allows people to go on and do great things. So from that, when I got out of college, I got involved in the community. I served 15 years on our Board of Frederick Community College. I started volunteering in the schools. I had three daughters that all went through Frederick County Public Schools. I was very active with their educations as they went through, Walker's Hall, the schools in Walker's Hall High School. I went on to also serve on the state National Board of Community College Trustees. I was appointed by the Chancellor of the University of Maryland, served six years on the University of Shady Grove. But I wanted to get back to our public education system, so I ran in 2010 and was elected. And some of the big issues that I had, my background, my business, I run a financial plan and investment management practice, so obviously the budgetary pieces were very important to me. But also the funding pieces, as Camden said, we went through, my first four years on the Board, with zero increases in funding. It's very tough to run a school system with that. And so if I'm reelected, my three top areas that I want to focus on are finishing, our salary transition for our teachers and our employees to the new scale, public safety and the safety in our school systems, and the LINKS program that was started here in Frederick County, which I think has shown outstanding results so far. I want to see it continue here and spread throughout the county, so thank you.
Ms. Karen Loom.
Good evening. See if this mic works. Thank you for having us. Thank you for coming. It's wonderful not to speak to an empty room, but even if there was just one person, it'd be great to talk to you. And this is more than one person, for sure. I retired for 25 years of teaching in June and people keep asking me, "So what's retirement like?" I will let them know on November 7. Campaign certainly has kept me busy. It's been a lot of fun. I have enjoyed it. I'm also working for my husband, which I've done, starts my 10th year. So I've gone to half-time teaching the last nine years. So my head's been filled with getting him licensed in another state today and shifting now to education matters. I started, came into teaching actually a little different than a lot of people. Most people, "I love that teacher. I want to be like that teacher." I had a teacher that really did a disservice to the students in sixth grade. I kid you not, we did math once a week, I always say whether we needed it or not. Obviously that left us very voided skills for middle school. It took me years to catch up. I didn't even think I was good at math. My father's a nuclear physicist and my kids are accountants, so there are math genes there. But I left high school. My plans in my yearbook were to stay as far away from school as possible. I jinxed myself. I went to college, got my teaching degree, substituted. I was a PTA president. You know, I had three kids and that's when I became a teacher, so I've never left school. But public education, I have a passion for it and it's what I know. And I just didn't want to go off and retire. I wanted to be the voice of the classroom along with Mike Finnicki. Sorry that I left him out last time. He does a great job. But I have elementary experience and I want to be that voice for the students and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kim Williams.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike, very much. I appreciate that. Thank you to the PTA Council and also Frederick High School for hosting us and also to you, each and every one of you taking your time to come out, to talk with us, hear us, which is very important, both, both sides. We're talking, you're listening, you're listening, we're talking. It's critically important. I also would like to say thank you to fellow candidates here. This is a lot of work. It's what we all, apparently, we're all very committed to public education, so I'm happy to be here with these folks. I am a mother of three grown children that were raised here in Frederick County Public Schools and I have five young grandchildren. Three are from Germany and two of them are here. I am a Navy veteran. I'm a Christian. I've been a past PTA president at several schools here in Frederick County Public Schools. I have close to 30 years here in Frederick County volunteering. Every, I've been president, a vice president, been treasurer. I was at the school so much, people thought I worked there. It's just, I have this passion for students and, and not just the run-of-the-mill student, every student, especially the underdog. I'm really passionate about that because for a lot of kids, my, my children knew they were okay, they were well taken care of, but it's for those kids that come to school and want to do the best that they can with, with very little. I have three things that I'm interested in talking about and one of them, obviously, is salaries, which without the money, we really can't do anything. And since they initiated this salary increase with the staff and the teachers, that's very good. Also, safety is very important. We need to collaboratively work with everybody in the, in the county, the county executive, the sheriff, the police department to keep our children safe. And diversity is my last issue. I'd like to see more diversity, not in the schools, because there's plenty of diversity in the schools, but on some of the boards that we have in Frederick County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ironically, we're going to come back to your three priorities in just a moment. What we're now ready to do, we have some prepared questions and we'll move around a little bit. So each candidate will have a chance to be one of the first people answering a question. But in this case, you'll have 90 seconds and you'll still get your 15-second warning. So I'll mention the question, but if somebody didn't hear it correctly, let me go, I'll say it again. The first one, we'll start with Dr. Miller. The first question is, "If you are elected to FCPS School Board, what are your top three priorities?"
I have three priorities coming forward. One is, they're very broad because I like to put a lot of things into them. So the first is infrastructure. And by infrastructure, I mean not only the building, but what we're sitting here, but also I consider infrastructure, the technology, everything we need to keep our school system running. So the infrastructure to me also means safety and security. We have been, have a focus on safety and security through our working with our SROs, through the vestibules, the security, the Raptor. We've been doing a lot as far as safety and security and I want to definitely see that continue and encourage. The next I would call intervention. So intervention to me is where do we, where is something not going right? And one of those things is in special education, in dyslexia, dysgraphia, in our reading program. Those are the things that I really want to focus on going forward in the next four years. We have done things and put those in place for this budget year and I would really like to see those go to fruition. And meeting each student's need where they are, so intervening where they are. That's what I consider intervention, whether they are most highly able learner or whether they need a lot of help. We need to meet them where they are so they can find success. And the last thing is the innovation piece. Innovation piece, meeting our dual role program, which has been absolutely incredible, taking off thousands of students, helped just this semester alone. And we're working toward the LINKS program, what we're doing toward getting students to be able to reach their associate's degree, what we're doing as far as career pathways and our apprenticeships. We're doing some amazing things. Kids have a lot of incredible opportunities and I like being a part of that. I like being able to serve our kids in Frederick County.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Raynor, your turn.
Thank you. Try to speak just as fast. Get louder. I have three main priorities as well. My first priority is promoting STEAM education in Frederick County. That's not a criticism of the current Board of Education. I think nationally we had this focus of the last, since the recession really, of science, technology, engineering, and math. While I think that's valuable and certainly it gives some very high-end careers. I confess so in my friends in college town. We, I think we sometimes undermine the value of the social sciences, the fine arts, and humanities playing public education. I want FCS to be a place where a child, no matter what kind of topics they like to pursue, can be celebrated for their passions, whether that's being the next poet or author, or great historian or mathematician. And that's very important to me. Second is equity in school construction and the capital improvement around the county. We have Frederick High School as a great example. It's a stunning building. It's a real success for the county. It's wonderful to see such a beautiful building. Again, we have a challenge in Frederick County, a significant overcrowding in the southeastern portion of the urban and rural area. And while we're continuing to build new schools, there are a lot of aging schools in the northern, western half of the county particularly, forgetting the quadrants. And it's challenging to find a way to balance the need for new seats while renovating older buildings. That's quite important. Make sure we're not forgetting communities around the county. Make sure we're spreading the money equitably around Frederick County. And finally is a continuing implementation of staff, who is salary scaled. We have teachers who are professionals. They're certainly paid competitively in Frederick County. We're doing a great job. Let's continue that as we head into the future. Thank you.
You did well. You did speak this nicely. Mr. Young.
Thank you. As I said, my, my three top priorities were the salary transition, safety, and the LINKS program, so I'll elaborate on this a little bit more. A couple of years ago, unfortunately, Frederick County had fallen to the bottom of the starting teacher salary scale in the state of Maryland. And we began to lose teachers to neighboring counties, Washington and Carroll. And while in both great counties, Frederick County should never lose teachers because of pay to those counties. And so I sat down and ordered with our Teachers Association and negotiated a new salary scale in order to correct that. Now, part of that also meant we had to do a lot of lobbying and working with our county. We've been blessed with our current county executive in funding that pay scale and putting it in place. We had another year ago on that transition. The second is safety. With all the school shootings and things that have gone on through our country, our parents and our students need to feel safe in our buildings. I talk to our law enforcement agencies on a continual basis. We've put in places, Dr. Miller mentioned, the Raptor program where you now have to show your ID coming into the building. We're finishing up the safety vestibules as you come into the buildings. But we work very closely with our sheriff and local police departments to make sure that our schools are safe. And finally, the LINKS program here. A building, it's a great new building, but a building's a building. It's the teachers and the programs that are in the building that may get a success. The LINKS program is intended to make sure that students get the education that they need in the format that they need. I think it's great and I look forward to taking that throughout the rest of our county.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
So my top three, three priorities, all of course, and a lot of ours do take money, which is why it's really important to vote yes on question one on the ballot on election day. That will keep that money from gambling. Committed to education and not taken away, so I just want to get that word out there. My first one's easy, the continued implementation of the salary schedule because they've already done three out of the four years. So I think that's well on its way to being a, I don't want to say an absolute done deal. It always is there with funding, but stands a good chance of being implemented. But we need to work more to make sure that even trickles down to support staff who often don't make a living wage and not as many as we'd like have benefits. So that's, I'd like to keep working on that. Career tech and technology expansion, center expansion. It's a great opportunity and they turn away too many students, so we need to look at some creative ways. Maybe public-private financing such as they did for the Earth Space Science Lab. Something creative that where we could expand that. And my third has been to make sure that our schools are safe and welcoming. And safe, obviously, is safety and welcoming is a lot of things. We want to meet students where they're at and make sure that they know they're appreciated for who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I think we all have a lot of the same ones in mind to start out with is salaries and obviously we need to make sure that we are hiring the best and the brightest. And in order to get them here and keep them here, we have to pay them. We are losing them to other places like, I know where other people said. And so the salary implementation program that's currently happening right now, it's certainly in a step in the right direction. The next thing that I want to talk about was safety and I touched on it a little bit before. So we need to be able to work collaboratively, everyone, the mayor, county council, county executive, after all, obviously, police department, sheriff's department, into making our buildings safe because whoever wants to think of having their child go to school and not come home, it's happened so many times and it's devastating every single time. So we need to try to just work together to see what we can do to keep our children safe. It's very critically important. Also, and the welcoming part, not just the, the physical part too. When kids come to school, we, we want them to come in to be taught. Okay, my last one is diversity. So I would like to see the school system, Frederick County Public Schools, at least maybe start to have a counter or something to start address, start addressing, having the schools, maybe leadership, teachers, administrators be more diverse. Our schools are incredibly diverse. My youngest son went to Frederick High School here and it's just, was a beautiful atmosphere. My two, two of them went to TJ, same thing. I mean, they, they interacted, talked, played, learned with people from every walk of life and I think that's so wonderful. But I think we need to start incorporating having more diversity with our teachers and staff, administrators, Indians, Asians, African-Americans. Hire the people that look like the students in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
If you see my campaign logo, it's on there, "Expand," "Empower Engage." There's a sign up there if you'd like to take one at home and put it in your yard. I appreciate it. Expand. Just like me, get those kids in honors classes. Challenge them, challenge our teachers to move those kids up that they think they can do it. I didn't think I could, but if we challenge our kids, most, most, four times not, they're going to, they're going to step up to that challenge and be able to do it. So we always have to challenge our, our students, our parents, our teachers to be able to make sure that we are giving all of our kids the best education. The CTC program. I'm in real estate. We're always looking for HVAC people, electricians, plumbers. We have lots of jobs out there, especially in the construction industry, that are, that are making. So we can get our kids to understand that, you know, being a plumber is fine, but don't just be a plumber. Work towards being the owner of your own plumbing company. Not just, you know, work for somebody else, but make sure that you are trying to better yourself eventually down the road. I was an athlete and so when my daughter started playing violin, I started to appreciate the arts and music. Listening to her and her former teacher play violin together, I got a great appreciation for the arts. So expanding those opportunities, empower our teachers by giving them a higher salary and helping them in the classroom by engaging in community like the Nektite Club, who's in a few of our high schools, who are teaching our kids how to use rock rolls of water, which we use on the board. They have leadership roles in the, in the Nektite Club. And the Nektite, the Nektite Club is run by a local fraternity. So just making sure that we're engaging our community to get in the school and help us out with our teachers and our students and our administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett.
Thank you. My three priorities, the first one is, it's still why I'm here for office in 2014. It is our persistent and pervasive and tremendously unacceptable achievement gap. In Frederick County, we still see declining achievement, flat achievement for students of color, students who are English language learners, students who receive special education services, and students from families who are at or below the poverty line. This remains my priority. I, you know, and it sounds silly, but there are nights that I cannot sleep because we are not making the progress that we need to be making. We've had tremendous conversations about what the definition of equity means in Frederick County Public Schools and those are conversations that we need to continue. My second priority is simply better strategic planning and a focus on continuous improvement. As I started to say before I ran out of time in my opening remarks, we have been incredibly lucky. I came on the Board at a lucky time, at a very hard time. We were coming out of maintenance without funding. And it was absolutely essential that we start to catch up teacher salaries. So like Ms. Young said, our entire board committed to that work. We increased class size. We made hard decisions. But now that we have more money, it's essential that we start measuring, doing a better job measuring the results of our investments. And my final priority is of course, to continue the transition and raise teacher salary scale. But I don't think that's enough. We need leadership opportunities for teachers, teachers who can move out and develop additional leadership opportunities, have an opportunity, not necessarily to move into administration, to keep good teachers in the classroom and reward them for staying in the classroom. So those are my three priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some really good questions that have come in from the audience. So I'm going to ask everybody to, I kind of zoomed out reading these questions for the candidates to try to stick to their ninety seconds because there's going to be some we maybe aren't going to be able to get to. And like I said, there's some really good questions. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Rayner. We're kind of, like I said, rotating. And the question is, as a candidate for school board, what do you see being the biggest obstacle that FCPS is currently facing?
Whoever wrote that, that's a fantastic question. I think it's multifaceted. I would say the current biggest issue we face in Frederick County is continuing to dig out the hole that the recession left us as a school system and find a way forward as we continue. We've had a wonderful county government continue to give us a lot of maintenance without funding, finding a way to restore some of the programs and activities and sacrifices that were made during the recent recession and how we move forward as a school system. Again, and more broadly, I'd also say that finding and ensuring we continue, et cetera, some things that Dr. Miller and Ms. Barrett both said, equal access and equal opportunity for all students in FCPS. Your zip code should not determine your GPA in Frederick County. You should be able to attend a magnet program with CTC. Regardless of where you live in Frederick County. Of course, it comes back to a funding issue. But again, making sure every student in Frederick County has that opportunity. It leads to a more successful and more shared success for all of us who live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
I'm going to agree that funding obviously always is a major obstacle and always will be. And certainly, the more funding you have, the more things that you can do. I'm going to say that I think in my eight years on the board, the one thing that I realized is that every problem that our school system has is a community problem. When we're looking at the opioid addiction problem, we're looking at suicide rate, we're looking at bullying, exclusion, and many other things. Most of these things start in the community and work their ways into the schools. One of the big things that I've had a big focus on the last five years is adding additional mental health positions there at schools, additional social workers and clinical psychologists that can help work with young students that have issues that they are getting at in the home place. Having, now I have two grandchildren. My oldest grandson is just about to turn three. And it scares the, you know what, out of me when young kids start to get on social media. There's so many bad things that happen there that then roll over into our school system and as parents and as a community. Again, why I'm staying involved at this point is because I have a deep commitment to young people. I think it's great to have a young person like Cam that's stepping forward to run because we need younger ideas. We need different ideas. But as a community, we need to work together to solve these issues that are facing our community. And I think we can get those done. And that's why I'm running again.
Ms. Young?
Sitting here racking my brain, thinking biggest obstacle. And I'm afraid it always comes back to money because every obstacle, I think, could be helped fully addressed with more money. Several years ago, with the recession, every single school had to cut one teaching position. We haven't been able to come back from that. We implemented three of the four years of the salary schedule, hopefully addressing class size. And they're trying to do it in revenue-neutral ways. Right now, media specialists that are in smaller schools might have to go to a large school once a week to help out, to try to cover things. So they're trying to find revenue-neutral ways, but money would obviously help us get class size down. More psychologists and more support staff for the students, money. Eliminating the achievement gap. You know, studies show repeatedly, the Curwen Commission currently, Ronald Reagan's a nation at risk, that there's a certain level of funding that has to come to support the public schools in the way it needs to be supported. So I think to me, that's the biggest obstacle. And we're going to start to address all the individual obstacles.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Very much. Yes, you know, I have to agree with each person that has gone before me. And I would have to say that funding is always going to be the number one issue because without the appropriate funding, people fighting for this money and not just, you know, our local government here, county council, the mayor, the alderman, you know, everybody that's involved in getting these funds passed through Annapolis, it's critically important. We have the right people in place fighting for the funding so the programs could exist. And yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. It's just, if we have the money to do it, it's just like in your own personal life. If you have money to do something, you have more opportunities to do it. We can reach more people. The teachers can teach each child. We never know what teacher's going to reach what child. We just need to have the funds. That's what it all boils down to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
The achievement gap. When I finished my masters up in 2012, I joined a local community group called Eliminate Achievement Gaps. And when stats are broken down, our African-American students are at the bottom, still remain there. We started with Park in 2014, and the gap got bigger. I think we need more minority teachers in the classroom. That would help. We need more mentors in the schools. That would help. I think we need to focus on those kids that are at the bottom. Challenge them, like I said before. Get them to take those honors classes. Once they figure out they can do it, they will do it. That'll solve some of the achievement gap problems. Solve some of the issues that we have with our kids getting bored in school and causing problems for our teachers. I think once we focus on the achievement gap, seriously, I think we will solve a lot of problems.
And for Ms. Barrett?
My answer is a little different. Obviously, money is a huge issue. And like I said, when I joined the board in 2014, we were coming out of it. And we pushed hard, but at some point, whoever is elected to be our county executive also has to prioritize our fire service, other public services in Frederick County. We have a $615 million budget. I am a progressive person, but I'm also fiscally conservative. And I think you need to be in Frederick County. Our biggest obstacle in Frederick County Public Schools is a little bit of risk aversion. It's fear of boldness. It's fear of risk. It's fear of doing something different. And I don't say that lately. I've been sitting on the board four years. And I have been, I've started my career in the federal government with OMB report cards and constant performance monitoring. And then I moved to the business sector where we had to, I had to share a hotel room on traveling to save money. There are hard decisions that need to be made. But at the end of the day, public education is about educators, teachers, and staff connecting with students, having more opportunities for that. So that means saying no to state and federal mandates, pushing the envelope so teachers can teach. When I talk about boldness and excellence, every single person who goes into public education wants to be the owner of their classroom. They want to lead and they want to innovate. And we have to give them an opportunity to do that. I don't mean, I don't want a Frederick News Post article about this jeopardizing our state and federal funding, but we have to start pushing back sometimes. We must. We have to own and have that local control of that. It's down to the classroom level. Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
My answer also has to be a little bit different. It's interesting, since I've been on the board, our funding has gone up about $96 million. When I got on the board eight years ago, it was only, our budget was a little bit over $500 million. And now our last budget was over $600. So funding has been there, especially in the last four years. During the recession, it was difficult. We had to make difficult choices. One of the choices that I did not make was to increase class size because I did not think that was the right decision, especially because it did go to fund salary increases. So if you say you want one and not the other, there are limits. And there are limits to funding. And that's just how it works. And you have to live within that and you have to prioritize. And for me, the priority is reaching each and every student. That is what the biggest obstacle in Frederick County is. Because it comes down to how do we reach each and every student? How do we support that teacher to reach that student's needs? How do we support that special education student? How do we support that highly able learner? Every student is unique and has different learning styles. And they have different things that they're bringing to school in their backpack. And that backpack is very different than when I went to school, what's coming to school. The anxiety, the behaviors, the mental health, all of these things are packed in that backpack. And then they're broadcast, like I was saying, on social media. So the things that these children are dealing with, the things that our teachers are dealing with, are very, very different. But we have to focus on how to reach each and every. And that will solve a lot of the issues that we have.
Thank you. You all did well. To change things up a little bit, we often hear complaints or concerns. This next question, and we'll start with Mr. Young on this one. Tell us one or two things about FCPS school system that you love and would not want to change.
That's easy. The first one is our outstanding teachers and staff. I spend a lot of time in our schools and going throughout our county. And again, we are very blessed that we have many dedicated and committed teachers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, front office support folks, and central office folks that deeply care about their students and what goes on. I do take it personally when I hear people bash Frederick County Public Schools because we have people that pour their hearts and souls into what they're doing. So I think our number one asset is our employees that we have here in Frederick County. Again, I take great pride in our CTC center. My oldest daughter, when she was in the 10th grade, struggled in school. I took her to the CTC open house. She took up a love for nursing. Since that time, she's completed her associate's degree, her bachelor's degree, her master's degree. Now she's the charge nurse at Frederick Memorial Hospital Emergency Room. And now she's teaching at Frederick Community College. And so that passion for education came through to her, but came through our career in technology center. So the opportunities that our students have in Frederick County Public Schools are always making me with heart. We had another young lady out there at the CTC that designed the emblem that's going to go on the Barack Obama Presidential Library. She was selected, her design was selected from ones throughout the country. That happened right here in Frederick County.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Well, I was a teacher for 25 years. I worked with phenomenal people in the wider public. You frequently hear criticisms of teachers. And I just didn't work with those people, support staff, hardworking administrators, central office, just wonderful, wonderful people. So I think people feel pride in Frederick County Schools and like to work here. I'd like to keep that going. The other thing I think we have in Frederick County Schools, of course, the CTC, but the Earth Space Science Lab for elementary students is such a gem. And even when it was in South Frederick or Lincoln, Mr. Brillson, Mr. Bowen made it wonderful. And now that they have the new facility, it's not even that new anymore. But it's just such a gem. If you haven't had an opportunity to visit there, you know, I got to go there every year with students and I take it with grandchildren. It's a wonderful place. And I think it's just something great that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So the staff, teachers, administrators, employees, they are the backbone to having our children learn. We want to make sure that we have these right people in place. And I know I've spent so many years in the schools, just seeing and being with everybody. I would come in on the Friday. I was off spending the entire day. I'd be in PE and be on the playground. I'd be in math. I'd be cutting paper in the office. So many wonderful people, cafeteria workers, people who take out the trash. I mean, it takes, you hear that, it takes a village. It really does. These folks are so committed to our students. And it was great to be a part of that for over 30 years. I mean, it just was wonderful. The other thing is funding, having the funding for these programs. Because you never know what program a child is going to take that's going to be the life for them. I have three children and they're all different. My oldest son was an outstanding athlete here in Frederick County. He went to school on a full athletic scholarship. He has three degrees. And he's a year from getting his PhD. My middle son is just a child of the world, not an athlete. Likes to write. Likes to read comic books. Likes to play video games. He's just himself, a beautiful person. Also, my youngest son, music and arts. He was an athlete as well, but he loved music. Was in the marching band. I wouldn't have ever really thought that, but that was his thing. So we went with that. And he's also an Eagle Scout. So you never know, when you have the funding for these programs, what is going to really attract these kids. And everybody deserves a chance to just be who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
The expansive opportunities we have for our kids to show. I'm in the Frederick Burger Club and we have lunch every Wednesday. Ten months out of the year, we bring it to high schools with either a principal, an AP, a guidance counselor, somebody, and two students from East High School, who are nominated by the principal to come to our Rotary for four weeks. They get to, at the end of the four weeks, tell them what they've experienced over those four weeks. But the first week, one of our Rotarys gets to read their kind of resume and what they do. And some of these kids are so bright, so amazing. They have great opportunities past high school to go to great colleges. They come in with 4.7 weighted GPAs. We had a kid that had, going into college, 22 credits because of the, because of being able to go to FCC while she's in high school. We have incredible opportunities. We have a great music program, a great engineering program. We have an IB program in our van. I think there's so many different things that we offer our kids to do. We have the CTC program. Kids can come out with a certificate. Instead of going into college, they can go into an apprenticeship, work for two years, and come out making just as much money as probably some of us. So we just have so many opportunities for kids to be able to find what their passion is, learn it, live it, and go on beyond high school and become great Frederick citizens. And we always encourage kids, once they go out, go to college or wherever, to come join our Rotary. They become a great citizen of Frederick County.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett?
Well, they seem to have taken all the good answers. No, I've had some moments to think there. So I grew up in my roots of, and I thought Frederick was just too small. So I went to northeastern Pennsylvania for college and went to University of Maryland for my graduate work. And I went to law school in Washington DC. And on the way, I lived in the DC area. I lived in downtown Baltimore and just thought the city was for me. And I needed to live in the city. And then it was time to have a baby. And I was like, how do you even go upstairs with groceries when you're pregnant? So I said, Frederick County is where I want to come back to. And this is where I want all of my kids at, our schools. And when I got back here, I was so happy that I did because Frederick County has changed for the better. So to get to the answer, what I value most is the diversity of Frederick County and the diversity in our public schools. There are probably at least 60, I think it's 60 languages spoken in this high school alone. It is tremendous. And these are opportunities for our kids. We have farmland around us. We have beautiful Frederick City. And our kids are getting experiences by being with their classmates that are part of their education. And that last piece is, we still are Frederick County. There are kindness and connection. I have had kindnesses done to my children in Frederick County Public Schools by other adults that have just been so touching to me. I've had teachers deliver work to my house. I've had bus drivers with just the words that my kids needed to hear that day. So even as we grow and we change, the kindness of our people and the commitment, always getting it done and doing their very best, just make us an excellent school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Miller?
This job hasn't come, doesn't come with too many benefits. But one of the, really, one of the most fabulous things is graduation.
But one of the, really, one of the most fabulous things is graduation. And we try to go as many of them as we can. We have a whole week that we usually set aside and we take time and we go to graduations. And you sit there and I still make chills, chills every time I hear "pum" just right down my back. You sit in there and it, we are surrounded by communities and the community. And you can feel the energy and the passion and the support for those students. And that's the best thing about Frederick County is because we have that everywhere. And so they're surrounded by teachers that have supported them. And FCPS teachers changed my life and they changed the life, every single lives, every single day in those classrooms. Our support employees, they are incredibly passionate about what they do and how they serve our kids. So it, it goes from, from top to bottom, our, our staff, our community and our community partnerships. We're very lucky. One of the first things I did when I got on the board is because we were kind of a little siloed with Frederick County. But we're all Frederick County and we're all one Frederick County. And so we did a synergies committee and we pulled in the county, we pulled in FCC, we pulled in the municipalities. And we started saying, how can we save money? How can we work together? How can we partner? And that mentality has stayed and it's just the way we do business in Frederick County now. Working with FCC, there's not any other county in the state of Maryland that works as well as we do with our community college. And those are things that give us our opportunities for our students. They give us our business partnerships and they let our students have the incredible opportunities being surrounded by the community and the teachers that support them. And that's what I think is amazing about our CTS.
Thank you. Mr. Rayner.
Thank, it's wonderful to have some time to think here. I, on a more serious note, again, I would say, I can't emphasize this, we've all said it eloquently up here, the commitment of our educators. A special shout out to our, our special education instructional systems and people who, who work so closely, which I got from special needs family. I'm familiar with the, with the real love our employees have for our students and our students need that. And I, I say that personally, it's a thank you to FCPS as well for all they've done for my family and for families all around Frederick County. It is truly an invaluable service they provide to our students. I, I really do mean that sincerely. Additionally, um, something that's effective me personally, I love the opportunities we have, especially for our high schools, high school seniors and juniors and career advancement. Uh, Jay mentioned earlier AP credits going into, I have 31 AP credits going into college. I skipped a year of college. That saved me, I mean goodness, 50, 20, 25,000 dollars. This matters to students and it's incredible in the era of really accelerating college costs and the pressure to find a job is so acute. We have a wonderful dual enrollment program here in Frederick County. I love seeing, um, students who are graduating with associates degrees and apprenticeships. I mean goodness, I pay electrician, I guarantee my car works. It, it's really, we are teaching students skills. And that's what I think we're here in public education to do, marketable skills. And how to be a good citizen as well, and that comes back to the love they have for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, you guys are creeping over that 90 seconds a little bit here. We've got to tighten it up a little. Um, Ms. Young, we'll start with you. The question is, what do you see as the school system's role in addressing the needs of the whole child? Specifically, support positive mental wellness and early intervention supports?
I hate to keep harping on this, but as a 25-year teacher, no, but as a teacher, I know if the students aren't coming to school with their head in the game, you're not teaching them that day. If they haven't had breakfast, if they've had a fight with a parent, um, dad didn't come home for some reason, you're not teaching them that day. Um, one student can totally disrupt an entire classroom. So it's really important that we help these students cope with the trauma that they're experiencing. Um, I'm thinking of a particular student from last year right now comes to my mind. And as soon as the campaign's over, I've talked to his teacher already. I want to go home, go into school and help her help him this year because we didn't get it done last year. And, and this child's either gonna, um, have a lot of potential or he's going to bottom out. And I'd like to help her make sure that he does the former, um, uh, trying to think, you know, think of all the students through the years. Um, the other thing I started seeing, it's a, it's a flip side of that, is that we need to teach students to be resilient. I started having students come up to me with minor complaints that were causing them to fall apart. So help them be resilient, but help them get help when they truly need it and my time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, again, I, I agree with Karen. I, I think we have to get them here first. And so, um, you know, once they walk through our doors, be that, um, arms wrapped around them in the form of teachers, administrators, anyone that they may run into in the course of the day, the village per se, community, parents, FCPS working together, um, to teach them. But we have to initially get them here. And, and once they get here, then we can do a good job. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Sure. Just have to find it first. No, we're good. Um, what do you see as the school system's role in addressing the needs of the whole child? Specifically to support positive mental wellness and early intervention supports?
You have to get to know the child, the family, the dynamic, what the child is going through. Um, I was on the board of the ship a few years ago, the Student Homelessness Initiative Partnership. And you have to understand what's going on at home first before you can try to teach a child. Um, there's so many challenges that many of our students have. If you are familiar with the House report that just came out, 40% of our students are living at the poverty level or below. So there's a lot of our community members that have several issues going on in their lives. They can't afford to put food on tap or can't afford gas for the child. So, you know, that causes problems at home. They're not working at a, at a high pay, high enough pay job that they can support their families. So that causes the students to have issues. And if we try to just teach the, teach, teach the kid when they come to school without understanding what's going on at home, we're not going to be able to reach them. We have to try to get to know our parents. Teachers have to, it would be nice if we could go back to home visits and have our, have our parents get to know the families so they can just understand what's going on. Dynamic for so many families in our community is, is troubling. And it, it's hard for kids to learn once they come to school if they have so many other things to think about. So we just have to make sure that, you know, we're trying to teach them the executive functions, how to deal with conflicts so that they're not flashing out at their students, their, their classmates or teachers or student resource officers or our, our support staff. You know, we just, we just have to make sure that we're trying to understand the whole family dynamic.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
I think my colleagues up here have expressed, um, what I, what I know as shared concern about our kids and the challenges that face them in Frederick County. As board members, as elected officials, there are very specific things we can do. And they're both, um, policy, um, solutions, um, they're funding solutions, they're prioritization of resources. Um, I know our teachers every day are caring about those concerns at home, the trauma, um, the family concerns, the poverty. Um, when I first joined the board, um, the wellbeing of our kids, their mental health status, the increasing anxiety was a tremendous concern. So in a very difficult budget year, I pushed hard and advocated, um, for licensed clinical social workers, which I think are a very effective and agile solution. Um, more licensed clinical social workers, um, cost a little bit less than school psychologists. They focus on, um, not only the child, but connections with the family. So, um, I, as, as, as we look to use our budget more effectively, I think more licensed clinical social workers are a tremendous solution. And it can't be pulled out through testing with kids like psychologists can. When I say testing, I mean cannabis testing. Um, I also think the idea of community schools, we have one, um, we have basically that aisle in Hillcracks and also at the Good Butterfly Ridge, it's coming along where we have onsite medical. We have, um, mental health care for families. We have English language learning training. We have a tremendous amount of family resources. If we're going to spend 114 to 120 million dollars to build this high school, this school needs to be a place where everybody can access resources. It is an investment we have made and we need to get every penny out of this building in terms of serving our kids and the whole child. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Miller.
Um, one of the things that we do partner well with is the Childfind and our Judy Center. Where we are, we are reaching kids very, very early and those programs are incredible. And then to piggyback on something that Liz said, cause then they feed into a, um, a model where you would have a licensed clinical social worker that's further feeder pattern. And that's very important. We started it at Brunswick and Katocton. And what that licensed clinical social worker does, then not only do they work with the students in the high school, but then also the middle school and the elementary school. Because guess what? Their families. So a lot of the times what's going on with the family is the same, family at the elementary and the high school level. So just having that from Childfind, from when those children are born, what that family's going through, what they're going through in that community and that longitudinal path all the way up through high school of how we can support, how we know that family and keeping that position stable and not having it be subject to budget years and, and loss of position, having that same person as much as we can in those communities and building that community trust is critical as far as I think. Um, the other thing is, um, if we have done a lot of study on ACEs and adverse childhood experiences. And we're trying to educate, um, our staff and our teachers on what that looks like and how we support, what some of these traumas, because we do have kids that have gone through a lot of trauma and a lot in their short lives. And how does that impact their classroom? And what can we do about it as a school system as they're coming through the door? The only thing we need to do is have a behavioral support. My dad is a disruption in the classroom. We need school, uh, people in the school to support those students. Um, and then we also need to figure out, again, back to each and every, what is preventing that child from learning on that day?
Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate us having this conversation and all. Again, as the most recent candidate to have gone through middle and high school, I think it's not always a fun time. And we have students, it could be the age of social media, as Brad mentioned earlier, especially nasty comments. I don't believe you all fundamentally need people. I think it comes out there on social media and the internet and certainly it's not fun to grow up with in this age. Everything is public and your mistakes and how you, it's how I've grown up, to be frank with you, it's, it's not always fun. Like, I mean, to me, I can speak personally, um, Liz mentioned social workers and a psychologist. We need to continue to work to lower the ratio of students to school psychologists and guidance counselors. I was really blessed, I had the same guidance counselor from sixth to 12th grade and that longitudinal relationship. It is incredible to have the same person to talk to over such a length of time. And to really get to know, to know a staff member and to understand you are, you are welcomed and you are heard and you are affirmed in who you are throughout our school system. So again, continue to make sure, um, as Karen mentioned earlier, the affirmation of students in a particularly difficult time to be a teenager in our school system, uh, through social media and that piece. Thank you.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. A lot of the things that were said there are extremely important. Pre-K is certainly also a great start for our students. Having our students be at a level when they show up for kindergarten to be ready to learn and move forward and providing their support is very important. Childfind, Judy Center, SHIP was mentioned by Mr. Mason, Mason now standing program. Blessings in the Backpack, making sure our students show up that are fed the night before or over the weekend. We have many great organizations in our community that are helping out like the Asian Center out on Route 40 with after-school tutoring and mentoring the parents and helping them find ways to make sure their students stay engaged. We recently as a board, uh, came up with a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. They'll be moving into where the new success program is down at Washington Street. Again, the Boys and Girls Club doing great things to keep these young folks engaged in their education. The mental health pieces are extremely important. Again, uh, students, when they're not focused on what is important during their educational day, they're not going to be as successful. So we need to make sure that there are issues that are there, that we have the supports available to them. As Dr. Miller mentioned, the medical services, again, uh, that's extremely important as well. So again, these are all community problems. We have to work together with all the agencies throughout the county, the community service organizations and within our budget to make sure our students have the resources that they need.
Thank you. Next question. I'm swimming in questions up here, so I'll apologize in advance to some of you that don't get your questions asked, but I'll try to combine a few of them. Uh, we'll start with Ms. Williams this time. Uh, part of what was discussed was one of the assets of the school system, of course, the employees, the teachers in particular. This question says, what are your plans to attract and retain great teachers?
Well, obviously, um, pay is, is certainly one thing that will get them here and keep them here. But, uh, again, um, Frederick County, uh, the city has a lot to offer. You know, people want to come and they want to live and, you know, they want to have it nice for their families. They want to live in a nice place, have their kids grow up in a, in a good place where there's good education system. Obviously, Frederick County Public Schools. So, um, that, that would be one of the things that I would certainly think as a whole, just having everything here. You know, we want them to live and work and play here, so. Is there a second part?
No, just that part?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mason? I got the question if you want me to repeat it.
All right. What are your priorities? Uh, one of my top priorities is to expand our, our diversity in our teaching staff and to let those teachers know that Frederick County is a great place to live. I grew up in Listowel, which is very close to Rocky Ridge. So when I was growing up, there was a lot of, uh, talk of KKK. Um, and that was kind of in my backyard. So for me to help teachers come here, understand that that element's going to be wherever you go, but I have not had any problems with it. And we just need to understand that Frederick is a great place to live. There's a lot that Frederick has to offer. There are a great art scene, a great music scene. Um, in the summer you get a big park and you, you see so many families out there on Sunday nights enjoying Frederick County. Um, we have arts festivals, we have, uh, great colleges here. It's an awesome place to live, it's a great place to raise a family. Like I said, I have three kids. So it's just making sure that those old, those very old, um, uh, misnomers about Frederick are gone. Um, some people outside of Frederick would like to say that that's a problem. That's not a problem. We can attract great teachers here and we can retain them.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
This is one of my, my favorite topics. Um, so, I mean, we need to modernize our HR practices. I don't know why public education, and it seems like we're not the only county, seems to have, um, HR practices that are significantly behind, uh, business and private industry. And I know there's all the laws and regulations, but we've got to do better. So yes, there is a nationwide teaching shortage. So there, there are fewer applicants, um, we absolutely need to be hiring for quality. Um, one, one of the big problems that I hear all the time is that, you know, in Frederick County, unlike Montgomery County because they're significantly larger, or Howard County, um, we absolutely can't even like really get moving on an aggressive part of the recruiting process until positions open. So that, that can't be our answer anymore because we're losing candidates. So we need a better solution. We need to say, as a board, that's not okay. So we need something different. We are doing a good job in Frederick County of starting to grow our own teachers and we absolutely must continue this. So, um, kids at high school, um, who show, are interested in, in education, um, our teacher, our Frederick County Teacher Academy is one place and our Career Technology Center is another place where they can work on some of those skills. I believe strongly in incentives, like private industry incentives, like student loan repayment. Let's talk about it. Um, let's talk about things that are best practices in the private industry. Um, let's talk about gym memberships. Let's, let's really think about this. What makes you wanting to teach in Frederick County? Let's pretend we're not in 1964 with our hiring practices and our recruitment. Because as Mr. Rayner so far pointed out, you know, we have a completely different generation of kids here um, who want different for their careers. And my final point is one that I made before. Teaching in itself is a, is a profession. We do not hire teachers because we want to be principals. We hire teachers because they are committed to teaching and kids. The only way to make a lot of money in public education is to become a principal. And that is unfortunate. So we have to create leadership opportunities for teachers who become masters of their craft and they can be rewarded accordingly for becoming masters of their craft rather than thinking they have to become a principal. That's all.
Dr. Miller.
Did I, no. Well, yes, but, unless not, I would say. Um, absolutely to the timing and the modernization of HR. Um, and the incentives to teach, to keep our teachers in the classroom. We have some incredible teachers and yes, the tendency is to pull them out, pull them out. So we do need to give them those leadership opportunities so they can stay in contact with students. Um, the, also the strengths of Frederick County and living here and how diverse our community has become and how passionate we are about our public education is a huge, um, attraction for, for teachers to want to come here. Um, equalizing our, our salary scale across, making sure it's attractive as far as on that lower end of the scale for, um, teachers to want to come to Frederick County, to even look to come here. And training up our, with, um, I recently had, uh, someone told me they, they started as an IA in another county. And I, I asked them, I said, well, check into their, um, their continuing education policy and their education reimbursement. Because what we've done here is a lot of our IAs that want to become teachers, we actually do a lot of, um, help and support.
we actually do a lot of help and support for them if they do then want to become teachers to reimburse them as far as their tuition reimbursement. And then also we are working on a teacher apprenticeship program to get students who are interested in apprenticing as teachers to kind of grow our own teachers. Because again, we have so many families where education runs through the family. Their parents are teachers, their grandparents are teachers. It's really awesome to see them. We need to keep them here in Frederick County. And then as well as a partnership where we do maybe do some tuition reimbursement if it would stay in Frederick County for a certain amount of time, and we work on getting them their AA degree through the teaching academy by their senior year, and then get their bachelor's, and even possibly their master's by the time they get up here.
Ms. Rayner.
Thank you for that smooth transition. We're all aware, as Ms. Barrett mentioned, there is a nationwide teaching shortage. Last week, we reported we had the lowest unemployment rate since 1969. It's an incredibly tight job market out there. And again, I swear, I say this all the time, if you're a young college graduate with significant amounts of student debt, you're going to go to the place that's going to pay you the most, first and foremost. I don't think that's unreasonable to assume from a young college graduate. That being said, money isn't everything, and I think it'd be a mistake to assume it is. We want, I think we want our staff members able to afford to live and work in Frederick County. It's a wonderful kind of living. We have some beautiful communities all around. And again, I want to go back to the homegrown teacher aspect. I'm the son of two homegrown teachers here in Frederick County, but there's nothing more satisfying than my parents telling me to teach where you grew up and to be able to go back to where you started and get back to the community to help make you. That being said, my graduating class of 271 students, I believe we had four or five teachers. It's not, we're getting there. But I'd love to see more of our FCPS graduates really embrace teaching as a viable career. You're not going to become a millionaire in public education. It is a public service. But I think through our salary scale transition, we can show it's a service that we value. And I think that's incredibly important as we head up, as we head forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
I agree that the pay is extremely important. I think we've done a lot, as I've already talked about, to address that. The second thing is we have to make sure that our teachers know that they're appreciated. I go out of my way constantly to do little things, dropping cookies off at schools, writing notes to teachers. I know emails are great, but there's nothing like a handwritten note to tell somebody thank you for what you're doing. In our county, we offer tuition reimbursement for our teachers. We offer it at the hood college rate, which is a higher rate, so most of our teachers can finish their master's degree and have it paid for. We have a great benefit package, health insurance, and other benefits here in Frederick County. So we have to emphasize those things, quality of life. Again, I think there's no better place in Maryland to live than right here in Frederick County, and we need to make, do a better job of emphasizing that. As was said, I think we can work with some of our support employees to help them transition into teachers. There's no one that I'm probably more proud of than Ronnie Veer, who's been an instructional assistant in one of our schools, and he's worked towards transitioning to be a teacher. One of the obstacles that he faced was he said, "Greg, you don't pay tuition reimbursement, but I need time off to do my classroom teaching." And one of the things we worked is working with the sabbatical, changing the sabbatical to help him with that. So we need to listen and help grow our teachers, but we have a lot of great people within our system that we can make any great teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
Going down my list of things I wrote, and I'm thinking everybody got things. Salary brings teachers here, maybe. A lot I've been surprised and pleased at how many of my children's friends came back to teach, not only in Frederick County, but the schools that they actually went to. So, you know, we have to let them know that Frederick County is a great place. But Frederick County also has to have affordable housing. I know that the county is working on things with Livable Frederick. That's really important, because if you get them here with salary and it seems like a great place, how do you keep them here? So that's an important thing. Also, I think we can sometimes get people here from other places if they have a support system. So a lot of times when you come to a school, you get a mentor teacher, and the county does a lot of things for new teachers. That maybe ought to extend into the community so the teachers know they have somebody they can fall back on if they're, they just need to know where to get their car fixed or what bank to use or whatever. With the teachers' opportunities, it's not even just advancement. That can be important. But a teacher I know taught 30 years from '22 to '52. She would have stayed in it, but there was nowhere for her to go except the classroom. The intervention positions could be moved around, not just gotten by one person and held for 20 years or whatever, or seen as a stepping stone. But let's switch them around for all different staff members. And student loan forgiveness, I think, would be something where then you commit to teaching here. Sorry for going long.
That's okay. We're back to the next question. Okay, we're going to tighten things up a little more. I'm not going to like jump up and down, but when that card moves up, I'm going to ask you to finish your thought, because we still have a lot of questions, and I'd like to get as many of them as we could. We're back up here with Mr. Mason, the first question. How do you differentiate the role of a board of education member as opposed to staff and high-level administrators?
Well, the role of the board is to set policy and regulations. I think it's essential to work with the administration and all staff. I'm on a few boards, so I think the best way to get somebody to achieve their goals, to be the best possible employee that we can ask for is to talk to them, to listen to them, to not always tell them what they need to do. It goes both ways. I want to make sure that our staff is able to express, be open with how they feel. I don't want to be a board member that just sits there and, you know, I'm not going to listen to whatever you say. I don't want to hear what you have to say. I want to be open. I deal with my daughter going into that math class. I didn't feel like there was an open dialogue. I don't think anybody's more important than anybody else. I think we have to work well in it. And we have to be a great school system. The only way to do that is to make sure that we're listening to each other and working well together.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett.
Well, the two roles of board of education members are to set policy for Frederick County Public Schools and to establish the budget and define the budget priorities. Along the way, we have a strategic plan for Frederick County Public Schools that was being finalized when I joined the board. We absolutely, as a board, need to do a better job of measuring the results of our investments, excuse me, against that strategic plan. So I would add that to that policy and budget piece. Additionally, you know, as Mr. Mason said, as a board member, you know, we have a zillion constituents. Frederick County is a big place. We've got 43,000 kids in our schools. They all have families, parents and grandparents who love and care for them. We have a tremendous amount of community partners in Frederick County Public Schools. And I take a lot of pride in the fact that I've, in the last four years, I've met individually for coffee, or by telephone, or for pancakes even, with over 200 community members. I have several spiral-bound notebooks where I've kept notes. And those conversations are absolutely crucial to me, the ones I have at the bus stop with my neighbors. The messages I get from community members saying, "Hey, is this an issue?" I don't see the white flag yet. I see it now. But the last thing I want to say as a board member is, I have prioritized the position of ombuds, the ombuds person in the school system, because it's a place to confidentially share issues or concerns.
We have to go ahead and cut children. Okay, that one might be next. Go ahead.
Often is that. The ombudsman is a critical role that we put as to be a liaison between the board and the school system and for the community. It's a place for the community to bring to concerns, for it to be confidential, and to help facilitate that communication. And it's a critical role right now, and especially to help us as board members, because it's our, that is one of the hardest things to do, is to keep yourself at this level up here where you're supposed to be deciding on the policy. But then, you're impacted by how they policy implement. And I'm impacted every day by the policies that we set, the decisions that we make in the budget with the Board of Ed, when we cut, when ninth grade sports was cut. I'm impacted by these decisions every single day because of my students, my kids. And I hear it on playgrounds. I hear it on soccer courts. I hear it on the volleyball court. I hear it everywhere. As a board member, I never turn this off. It is 24/7 for me. This, I love this. It's in my office. I'm an optometrist. I listen to the families. I listen to their concerns, and I talk to the students. So that part is 24/7. But we, as board members, we only direct one person, and that is the superintendent. We don't direct any other staff. So there is a clear level, a clear line of differentiation. And as a board member, we have to facilitate that relationship. We also, me as an individual member, I can do nothing by myself. I have to have four votes to do anything, any action. So this, the partnership of working with the board and how we communicate with each other, how we get done, is a critical piece and critically important. But we are all FCPS.
Ms. Rayner.
The question regarding the difference between board and administrators.
Exactly. Rules between them too.
Thank you. Well, I'd say first, the role of the administrator in FCPS is to essentially, in most cases, execute it, and it's to the role of board of education there by the superintendent. The role of board of education members, and then is to be a conduit to the public or responsible to the general public in that case. I think it's important, as we all remember, we're above. We all have our high school that we went to, our familial ties. We do it to the best interest of the public and the school system at large. And that's quite important to remember. Again, the reason we have our education, we're seven people out of our fleet of order million here in Frederick County that will make decisions. It's incredibly important, and I don't think any of us overall are always compassionate, but again, anybody, this is meant to be a community, a civic service, the public service to the community here in Frederick County. And I think that addresses the difference there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
To put it very simply, the board oversees the school system. The administrators run it. As was said, we're responsible for setting policy. We're responsible for setting the budget. And the third important one is we're responsible for hiring and monitoring our CEO, which is Superintendent Dr. Auburn. Beyond that, then, a board member is always, I see, is to be the eyes and the ears in the community as to what's going on, what's working well, what's not, listening to feedback. Mr. and the audience has come to many, many board meetings to advocate for additional dyslexia needs in our school system. As in board, we listen to that. That's important. Every board member in the meeting, we have public comment. But between board meetings, I get people that run into you in the store, that will send you an email. And if there's an idea or something that they have, it's my job to bring it back. It's not my job to tell staff to do this or to do that. As a board, we discuss what policies we want, how and what things to be implemented. It comes down to what the staff does. And so again, a board member is a conduit between the public and the staff that's there. But our job is to make sure that they're going in a direction of doing the right things for our students and to let them do their work on a day-to-day basis.
Ms. Young.
I'm thinking back to being in a classroom, and the average teacher on a daily basis doesn't think much about what the school, the board of education has done. It's not on their minds all the time, until they make a decision that the teachers don't particularly like, or they increase their salary. But on a day-to-day basis, there's definitely that buffer that is the administration. I think Mr. Young put it very nicely, the way he said, you know, the school board supports and the administrators run, and the kind of liaison there for the school is the administration between the decisions of the Board of Ed. I think it's really important to listen to the community. I know I've gone and spoken to the Board of Ed on many occasions, and you see when the students come in and ask for their programs, can be very persuasive. Then the Board of Ed has to take all of that into account and make the tough decisions. And we know they've made some very tough decisions. So that's what I see the role as, and not to supersede, not to overstep your bounds, not to go in and run the schools.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I get to be the last one on this one. But again, all the sentiments that were expressed here are similar to what I have in mind for the Board of Ed, the body, some people that really, their job is to support policies and procedures and the budget, making sure that the budget is what it should be. And again, communication is what is needed, and I think that happens a lot. It's a must. It has to happen between, obviously, the administrators, the people that are running day-to-day activities in the school. So that's pretty much it that I have.
Thank you. Okay, the next question. That seemed to work well. Ms. Barrett? The question is, and we have a mixture of questions tonight that are very generic and others that are specific concerns of the audience. And this is probably one of the ones with this specific concern, not to say it's any less of a community concern. Please grade the current programs to teach students with dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dys... dyskalia. Yeah, okay. Thank you. I learned something tonight. Ms. Barrett, would you start?
Well, this is a crucial topic. We talked a lot about the power of parents and community. And every single board member we've made this year, we have had parents of students with dyslexia come and advocate. And I was one of the board members who absolutely fought hard until the last breath of our budget to make sure that we reserved money for students with dyslexia, dyscalculia, dysgraphia. And it is long overdue. There's all kinds of complicating reasons, including changes in state law why we've let off of that. If I had to give ourselves a grade right now, I'd give ourselves about a C minus. And that's not for trying. That is not a criticism of our staff. But we absolutely know right now that we have students who are under-identified, and we have students who we need to serve better. We need good evidence-based, science-based programs for these kids. And just putting that money aside last year was the very first step. But our staff are working very hard. And this is not a criticism of our staff. We have a tremendous amount we catch enough to do, and it's going to be a significant effort from our folks. And thank goodness for those dyslexia folks, because the parents and the community members, they helped us, but they've also opened up conversations about additional reading resources and structured literacy so we can improve the reading programs for all of our kids.
Thank you. Dr. Miller.
I've got three now. Okay. So I also agree. I would say about, we're at about average right now. So I would say we're about C right now. But I would give us an A for effort, and I would give our dyslexia, coding dyslexia group, an A for effort and for advocacy, because they have really stepped up. And not only, it was an interesting way they presented it. We had children come and speak. We had children hand in their materials that they had written, and then they read. And it's amazing what their advocacy has done. And we did a board training on what it was like to be a student or child with dyslexia. They came to training for us. So we really have been trying to put ourselves in these families' shoes and in these students' shoes, because the reading is critical. You're learning to read, and then you need to learn to the rest of your life. And that skill is absolutely 100% critical. We can't take advantage of all these opportunities and all these great things that we have been talking about if you don't have that basic foundation. It makes everything 100 times harder that they are doing in that classroom. So no, we are not there yet. We are doing a lot better as far as identifying, as far as facilitating the communication, are something that our special ed strategic work group is actually looking at, how we facilitate those conversations and how we facilitate those trainings. So it is a work in progress.
Thank you. Ms. Rayner.
Thank you. Over the course of the past eight months or so, since I founded our board of education, I had the opportunity to visit and speak. I mean, goodness, hundreds of voters are in our large and beautiful county. And I can't believe how many times I've been asked about persons with dyslexia and special education in general. To be frank with you, we are, as I said, really, we're responsible to the general public and to the taxpayers, and I think it's wonderful. I went on the other side of the dais addressing, not, I said, the other years ago. I was, I spoke in front of there. I know how much it takes to get up there and advocate for your child or for your student at FCPS, and I commend them all for that. In that case, I've been enlightened and I'm educated regarding this issue. I will generally concur with Dr. Miller and Ms. Barrett that we're about average. But I think, again, the most important thing is that we're continuing to recognize our faults and look forward as a school system. And I look forward, if elected, to continue to serve the needs of our dyslexic students while in office. Thank you.
Ms. Young.
Well, thanks for making me feel so old, Ms. Rayner. I don't want to assess grade in Frederick County. I'll address the grade as a state. I think we are probably at a C minus. And the reason I'd say is a state is our school system was kind of handcuffed with what state rules were and what are things, where we started to get the advocacy from the parents. I started to work with the state, so those things changed. So I'm going to give our current effort an A as far as where we're moving. And I just backed back this past week from State Board of Education meeting down in Oshin City. We were board trustees, board of education members from all of the state got together. I talked to a number of them. And what I can tell you is that Frederick County has a lot of work to go. It's far ahead of the most counties in our state. So I'm very proud of the work that we're doing to get better. But it's always a course of improvement, and I think we're doing the right things. As Ms. Barrett said last year, our board set aside money to start to address the problem, to start to train teachers in identification, and put resources in place for students to be able to do that. It is very hard, which is when you have young people come to our meeting and get up and... and speak and articulate what they're saying, and then they show you what they've written, and it doesn't even correspond to what they said. I mean, that touches your heart, you really do know that it's an important issue, and I think our board is addressing it.
Ms. Young.
So the pendulum in education always swings and then swings back. About 20 years ago, I remember taking a course called Alpha Phonics, and it's what we did for our kids that were considered dyslexic except as teachers, we weren't allowed to make that diagnosis because that was a medical diagnosis. Things have changed, that morphed into LSP, Learning Language Support Program, I believe, and then we all kind of started noticing how when those teachers were retiring, they were not replaced, and those programs kind of went, and I kind of was wondering with some of the other teachers, I wonder where they went to, we were assured, oh, needs were being addressed in other ways. The community didn't think so, so now the pendulum swings back. My one concern when things, pendulum swings, is that we're now over diagnosing students, and if they get a diagnosis of this, it's not necessarily going to address their needs. We're also sometimes handcuffing our special ed teachers who have, you know, they're trying something, I've talked to a lot of special ed teachers about this, if they're trying something, it's not working, with some of the programs that are coming in now, you have to follow them to a T for fidelity. So we have to be careful when we implement things that the pendulum's not swinging back too far. If one thing worked for every student, we'd be doing that. So I want to see the needs of the dyslexic kids met, but not applied incorrectly.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Yes, thank you. So I want to just talk about the special education programs, and I'm sure that we do quite a bit here in Frederick County to make sure that the needs of these students are met, but I don't really have much information, personal information about the dyslexia program and what we're doing to that, so I can't really honestly give a grade to what I think is going on, I really don't have enough information, personal information, to do that, so I'm going to be tolerant right now.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Mason.
I'm not going to grade my fellow candidates, my incumbents up here, I don't want to, after getting elected, I don't want to start off on a bad foot. So I had a conversation recently with a parent, and she was dyslexic, and her now fourth grader is dyslexic, and wasn't diagnosed until second grade. She went out and got her own diagnosis from a qualified doctor, spent a couple thousand dollars on it, but it wasn't accepted. So from kindergarten, kindergarten to first grade, her student went on diagnostic, but she had proof that her child had dyslexia. And I want to thank the dyslexic community for advocating for our students, because that's where it begins. If we don't have parents step up and advocate, we'll never know the problems. So if we can address the situation sooner in kindergarten, first grade, listen to our parents, who know their child the best, and let them tell us that they know their child's dyslexic, if they spent a couple thousand dollars on a doctor, we should be able to listen to that. There was no flexibility in her situation to allow her to have her child diagnosed in kindergarten, second grade, or kindergarten, first grade. So I think we need to open the dialogue, let our parents tell us as a school system about their child, and what their situation is, and how they can improve. I guess I'll give this a C.
Thank you. Okay, we're to our next question. It's kind of interesting standing up here and watching here and watching there, and when that white card comes up, there's at least two or three candidates that look at me like, are you going to beat them soundly over the head and body for going over in time? But they did a good job that time, and I appreciate it. It's very hard to be in this forum, have ideas, and try to rush through and try to make your point, so, well, we'll cut you a little slack, but here, again, we still have more questions to get through. Dr. Miller, I guess we'll start with you then this time. This is very specific, and some candidates may be more qualified answer than another, but try. The question is, will you require evidence of success for the LINKS program before expanding it? And I realize that's an opinion.
Sure. Okay, well, a couple things. One, I want to finish up my dyslexia thing. At our board meeting tomorrow, we are having, actually, it's Dyslexia Awareness Month, and we are having our basic report card on dyslexia, so tune in and watch for me. As far as LINKS program, it's going to be really difficult to fully replicate LINKS, but some of the ideas and some of the strategies behind LINKS, we can go ahead and start replicating. One is the mentorship. These students are being mentored from their guidance counselors all the way down into middle school, and especially on schools where we have the schools right next to each other on the same campus, that's a little bit easier to do. But having that, again, that longitudinal, that vertical team from the middle school up to the high school, and having that support, is something that we can easily replicate in the rest of our schools. The other thing is the competency-based learning, the competency, 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 if I could learn to say that, that would be beautiful, but the competency-based learning is where they have a skill, and they have these metrics that they use to show that they have learned that skill, and they become, they get a core certification from it. We're doing it right now in a PE course, an art course, and a music course, where the students can show these competencies. So I definitely see that expanding to other schools. As far as being able to serve like breakfast, lunch, and dinner, being able to have the flexible schedules at other schools, that's going to be very, very difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I, in my recent Frederick News Post podcast interview, you asked a very similar question about the LINKS program, I will mostly concur with Dr. Miller on this, I think some of the ideas LINKS provides are kind of a bridge to where we're going the next 20 or 30 years of public education, fundamentally more individualization of students' journey through public education. I understand it's difficult to implement, I would personally, I see our buildings as multifaceted, we are a public utility in our schools here, and it should be accessible at a more variety of times, I like to see more classes offered at a variety of times, that is challenging, but I think it's where we need to go to accommodate different academic pathways as we proceed into the coming years. Again, I think, back to the accountability aspect of it, I think it'd be silly not to make sure we hold programs accountable, but we do that for our programs here in FCPS. But again, I'd like to see some of the ideas, the basic principles behind LINKS, the individualism, the focus on a student's talents, and the more flexible way you can approach your high school education to continue, and ideally at all 10 of our high schools. Thank you.
Mr. Young.
To start with, LINKS is currently only in the freshman, sophomore class here at Frederick High, they're taking two more years before all four classes are fully exposed to it. The board, at a recent board meeting, got an update on what's been going on with LINKS, and one of the most interesting things that I took out, and this is feeding back to Mr. Mason's comments about eliminating the achievement gap, since LINKS has been in place in those two classes, the average attendance rates of those classes has gone up, and most importantly, in those groups that we talked about that are underachieving, it went up even more. And so finding ways to make sure the students are engaged and want to come to school are important. Now, it's also nice to defactor in, in that period that they've got a beautiful new building, that's very nice to come into, I'm sure that played a role as well, but we have to find ways to make sure the students are engaged, they want to get up, they want to come to school, they want to learn, and understanding that many of our students have different needs. Some of our students have to work before they come to school, some of our students work after school, some of our students, again, have to work weekends, and so providing more flexibility to be able to deliver education to the needs of our students is one of the things that I think that we have to continually look at. I think LINKS does that, and we can expand those pieces of it through the rest of the county, but after evidence of success.
Ms. Young.
Definitely agree, you want to make sure something's working before you expand it, so I think that's a good way to look at it. But I see that things change, and education in a lot of ways hasn't, and if you look at millennials, you know, TV is on demand, they're not going to just, it's there, they're not going to watch it, but they want to watch it when they want to watch it. I don't know, you can think of a lot of different things that are now being done that way. My own children, two of them work at Social Security Administration, they sometimes work at home, sometimes work in the office, they keep three days in the office, so they keep a desk, some people don't, and they'll have rotating cubicles. So we have to look at how can we keep up with change that's positive and beneficial to our students, and I think if it is successful, it would be great to expand it.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Yes, sir, thank you. So I believe, I support the delivering of the individualized, the special programs, but, and like Karen said, things are changing constantly, and once we get them here, teaching them, having them learn in the ways that are special to them, and then expand on that once it's proven to be working and going in the right direction.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
The challenge of public education is taking 43,000 students and finding out what works best for each and every single individual student, because they're all different. And so, over here, door knocking on Bed Street, talking to a parent, and I asked him about the LINKS program, and to my surprise, was not very happy with it. So we cannot expand it before we figure out how successful it's going to be. He had to go out and hire a tutor for his daughter for algebra, so he was not very positive about the LINKS program. It's not going to work for everybody, but we got to make sure that it does work before we expand it.
Ms. Barrett.
So I had like 2,968 questions about the LINKS program, because it came really fast, so there was a lot of impetus at the state level, and there, I mean, there's many people in this room who have worked in public education for a long time, and there's always something new and better, and I think this constant steamroller of reform is overwhelming, and it does a disservice. But I'm going to say this about the LINKS program. Mr. Mason made a great point about trying to figure out what works best for everybody, but here are some critical parts of the LINKS program. Three meals a day, a lot of one-on-one connection with adults, mentorships, small groups, field trips, connections to your own community, more small groups, discussions about current issues, schedule flexibility. So if I had to take most Frederick County public students, and I had to take a small group of them, those core elements, I think, work, because education is intended to be personal, it's intended to serve that whole person that we talked about. Now, the complicating thing is that...
The house is going to be wrapping up.
Right. So I think we've got challenges with scheduling, competency, and learning to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no idea what that is, no one's fallen asleep out there yet, so I guess we're okay for a little longer. Since this is a PTA program, and this question is probably one of the more pertinent ones, and we'll start with Ms. Rayner on this. How do you plan to get the community more involved in making sure education in Frederick County continues to improve?
That is a phenomenal question. Given, the Board of Education, when you go to vote, is the very last phrase in the ballot, and that is atrocious, given the amount of fiscal responsibility the Board of Education has in Frederick County, although if the county budget is administered by Board of Education, we are arguably in my opinion certainly on par with the county council, and to the effect we're going to have in the daily lives of people who live in Frederick County. Again, I look to people like my good friend, Mr. Mason, and myself, who step up and have certain constituencies and values they want to bring to the public, to the public discussion. One of the reasons for, and some of the reasons I ran is to, because I believe we need community engagement in FCPS in Frederick County. Again, I think part of it is being the kind of person who can work well with people. I welcome and encourage debate and dissent, or someone we should be teaching our students as well to have a constructive conversation and take criticism, and that's how we're going to move forward in Frederick County. So again, fostering the relationships and the culture that encourages parents and community members to go to Board of Education meetings and to vote, and to really try to go to your students' parent-teacher conference, and being active, an active member and participant in your child's education, we know only one half of how a child gets to the central shrine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
Community engagement and involvement was one of the big issues that I had when I first ran in 2010, and when I got on the board, everything, every major decision that we made, I wanted to make sure that we had plenty of a community input. Frederick High is a great example. I knew when we got the report that said, let's tear down the existing building, the building there, when both my parents were Frederick High graduates, that that wasn't going to fly or work real well without community engagement. And we brought, as a school system, the community together to make the decision, and it worked really well. I try to be active and get out in all the schools throughout the county to be out in the community where people know that they can come up to me and talk about issues that are going on in our school system. I attended all 17 graduations as PACS Brown, from our high schools to Success to Rock Creek, to evening high school, flexible evening, high school, and summer school, and so I try to be present and make sure that people know they have it here, that they email, they're going to get an answer back, if they call, my phone number's there, they can call me. I think it's important that we make sure our community, it's their school system, these are their buildings, they earn them, we want them involved in making sure we continue to have a great school system.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
Before I was a teacher in the system, I was a parent. I substituted, I was a PTA president three times. The first time I was going to be a PTA president talking in front of an audience at Green Valley Elementary scared me for a year and a half before I had to do it. Then I got in, you know, where I could do it without passing out, and I began to advocate, and I started going to school board meetings, and I remember then getting to know some of the personnel very well, and knowing they were listening to me, and feeling very empowered, and I won't even tell you what one Dr. Gager used to call some of the parents when we were little, maybe too pushy, but he was a very nice man and helped us a lot. But having that influence and feeling like we're being cared, I've been there, it's very important. You can either make top-down decisions and then not live well with the consequences, because everybody's ready to revolt, or you can start smartly and start with the community and make sure it's a ground-up decision that everybody can support. Even if they don't support it completely, they'll understood how you arrived at the answer.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Yes, sir, thank you. Community involvement, so critically important. I came here from Montgomery County, we moved here in 1991, our son was in fourth grade. I was very involved down in Montgomery County, the PTA, I was PTA president down there. I've always been the type of person to get involved, and I think that just speaks to what I wanted to do for my children, and again, be there for the other children in the school. It's been a lifetime of, for me, public service of gratitude. I have nothing, I've never wanted to be a teacher, not by profession, but since my children were born, my husband and I, we were their first teachers, so I just really feel very strongly in being advocates for children, my own children, other children. I walk up the street, down the street, people talk to me, I'm in the grocery store, I'm at Rita's, and they're like, hey, I saw you on the blah blah blah, and the blah blah blah. Well, you know, I really love to talk, and, but more importantly than talking is listening to what people have to say. Okay. What people have to say, so I do enjoy that, but again, the reason I'm running is because we want Frederick County to have the best public school education for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Community involvement, community engagement is what led me to this seat right here. When I finished my master's degree in 2012, like I said before, I joined the Living Achievement Gap's organization, I eventually joined the shift board, joined the Yiddish Way board, I'm currently on Boys and Girls Club and that board, I've been on the Affordable Housing Council for the county, which led me to be one of the education leadership team for County Executive Jan Gardner, which then eventually got me all the way to the Frederick Scaring Committee. So I know my county, I'm in real estate, I understand the problems with affordable housing, we all want to live, work, and play here, so I've been engaged in my community, and I talk to people wherever I go to try to get them engaged in the community. I'm also in the Rotary, and what we do is give back to the community, so everything I'm about is being engaged in this community, so when I talk to people out, door knocking or on the street, I talk to them about just being involved in this great community that we live in, and enjoying everything that we have to offer in Frederick County.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett.
Ms. Williams had a great point about the importance of listening, and I think my commitment is really to listen, and I think as a school system, we talk about grading the dyslexia program, that was a question. Well, you know, we're talking about a C grade or something like that, but we're talking about individual children, and we're talking about parents who have given up hours and hours to come. to come, give public testimony to impact the budget and priorities of the board. I'm a special education parent myself. And it is grueling and exhausting. And when other parents fall down, we all have to stand up for them and carry them along and, and advocate for our own children and their children. And, uh, I've been an advocate for a long time, but, you know, we can't, we can always celebrate the success of the school system. And that's one of my jobs as a board member. But I very much believe that as we celebrate our success and we celebrate all the good things, that we must have the challenging conversations. We've got to lay it all out there and say, the only way people feel heard is through community knowledge that there are problems